So I'm going to give you a brief overview of Metro Reimagined. We also have members of our planning team available this evening to talk with you about the details of the Metro Reimagined vision so that we can understand the specific impact of the plan on your travel needs. So Metro Reimagined is really a vision for how the metro bus system here in Missouri, so that St. Louis County and the city of St. Louis would evolve over the next five to 10 years. Rethinking our transportation network, our transit network, is something that large urban transit systems like ours typically do about every decade. It's been since 2006, when the Blue Line Cross County MetroLink extension opened, that we did really a full-scale change of the metro bus system here in Missouri. Our intention is to create a network with the same level of funding we have available today that would be more cost-effective, that would carry more customers, and deliver an improved customer experience. Metro Reimagined is really part of an overall suite of projects, programs, training, and communication strategies that we're calling a rider-centric revolution. We are working to orient the service we provide, all of the decisions we make, the way we communicate with our customers and the public, to be more rider-centric. We are working to design this system around people, you, the customers first, so it's very important to us that we receive your very specific feedback about how this system may impact you, so that we can incorporate that into the next revision or iteration of this planning process. This is about providing our customers with alternatives to the services that we have available today. Ideally, those alternatives will get you where you want to go faster and more comfortably. We talked with the public in fall of 2017. You may have seen us at one of our transit centers onboard a vehicle or at a MetroLink station, passing out little cards which we ask customers to use to give us their feedback on the types of transit service or investments that are most important to them. The number-one request that we had from our customers was to run service more often, something we call greater frequency, so they don't want to wait as long between buses. Another common request was passenger amenities at bus stops, that's benches and shelters. Make me more comfortable while I'm waiting for the bus, and don't leave me there waiting as long, so I can get to where I need to go faster. And also, we want better timed connections between routes. I want to take a look at the draft network plan. I'm going to go over it at a rather high level. If you haven't already done so, I do encourage you to talk with one of our planning team, so we can really pinpoint any potential impacts in your community or all of the places you travel today on metro transit. Now, we know that in the St. Louis region, we have a number of different transit markets. We have very dense urban corridors. Some of our routes carry over 7,000 customers over the course of a day. We have lower-density routes, too, in employment centers and suburban locations that might only carry 250 or 300 customers a day, and we've got a number of markets that fall in between those two extremes. What we are trying to do is really identify the specific mobility needs of all of the communities we serve, and then propose the mobility solution that best meets the needs of that location, and then integrate them all into a complete network, so that customers can travel from, to any point within our transit network, to any other point within the system. We've put together this vision based on feedback and what we're learning from what other cities around the country are doing, and we've proposed using some of the same types of service we have today, frequent large urban bus routes, supporting neighborhood routes that run every 30 minutes or so, along with some new technology opportunities, new types of service, and partnerships with the communities we serve, including destinations like major employment centers. And fundamentally, we're really trying to just match those tools or service strategies with the communities we serve. The service strategies we're proposing today include some familiar and some new. MetroLink would be proposed to remain constant, it would operate at the same frequency, same system, with the exception of the opening of the Cortex MetroLink station between Grand and Central West End. You'll see that join our system later this summer. We're proposing, and this is one of the features of the plan we're very excited about, a suite of enhanced frequent bus routes. These would be large bus routes that operate at least every 15 minutes, some of them more frequent than every 15 minutes, especially during peak periods. They would operate every 15 minutes all day, with the exception of two of the routes, which would drop down to 20 minutes in the midday. That frequent all-day service really creates a network of predictable, high-speed, reliable service, the kind of service that you don't even need a schedule. You walk out and you know that that next bus is coming. We've proposed 12 enhanced frequent routes. Today, only one of our metro bus routes, that's the number 70 Grand, falls into that enhanced frequent category. We've been very deliberate about the spacing between those frequent routes and defining where they go, really trying to minimize any deviations off the main corridor for those routes, so that we can keep service running fast and often. Those frequent routes would be supported by a really large network of what we're calling our local routes. Most of those local routes would operate every 30 minutes. Some of them would operate every 60 minutes during the times we're not very busy. We're trying to push routes to what we call a clock-faced frequency, so it comes every 15 minutes or every 30 minutes ideally. That makes service very predictable, you've got even spacing between buses, connections between routes become easier, and schedules also become easier to remember. We have a suite of five commuter or express routes. We have express routes in our service area today. Some of them just travel Monday through Friday, peak period, primarily on highways or major corridors. We've also proposed a couple of all-day express routes between major origin and destinations or major corridors that need frequent connections, but they're pretty far apart. And finally, we're proposing a suite of service options, proposing in rather general terms at this stage, called community mobility solutions. Community mobility solutions could look like service, think something a little bit larger than an Uber or a Lyft, that's responsive to where you are and where you want to go, doesn't require an advanced reservation, but good for getting a small number of customers from point A to point B within a community, or from a community to a connection on the main transit system for completing a longer-distance trip. Community mobility solutions are often referred to as last-mile connections, you may have heard that. It could be carpool or vanpool solutions that are focused on a particular employer, so imagine a van shuttle that's parked at one of our hubs, like the Ballast Transit Center or North Hanley MetroLink Station, that's carrying a group of employees and coworkers to their final destination. That might be more effective, both for the customer and from a cost standpoint, for providing mobility in some of the markets where we just don't carry a lot of bus ridership today, and then those resources are funneled into trying to create that service frequency on the main line. Let's take a look at what this service footprint looks like. So I mentioned we're stitching all of these different service types together and trying to create a network that offers comprehensive mobility across the city of St. Louis and St. Louis County in the same community as we serve today. Says MetroLink, again, would remain unchanged, and these are our enhanced frequent metro bus routes. We have 12 of them. 61 Chambers in the north, 74 Florissant, 35 Rock Road, the 94 Page, number four Natural Bridge, 16 City Limits, 11 Chippewa, 10 Gravoy, and 73 Carrondelet. So we've got radial routes that come from downtown St. Louis, north and west, and we also have some north-south routes, including 15-minute frequency, coming all the way from Interstate 270 in the north at North County Transit Center to downtown, connecting at Civic Center Transit Center, and then a route that goes all the way from downtown to Interstate 270 in the south, or 255, at the South County Mall, at South County Center. These routes are supported by the local routes. These operate on most of the streets that we serve today. We've combined or changed some of them around. If you're not sure what we've proposed for your route or neighborhood, please talk with one of our planners, so we can share this draft with you and get your feedback. These are our express routes that would operate on Interstates 55, 44, within the 64 and west county area, and then an all-day route between North County Transit Center and downtown, and North County Transit Center and North Hanley MetroLink Station. And finally, these purple areas represent our thoughts for markets or neighborhoods where a community mobility solution might work. These are all places we're running metro bus service today, but we're not carrying very many people, and for the customer, the wait times are often long. If you're going to a place like Fenton, Gravoy, Bless, or you're going to an employment destination on one of the outer 40s and that western 64 corridor, there's not a lot of what we call transit-supportive infrastructure, things like sidewalks and good lighting, though that in itself makes transit difficult to use. Add to that, there's not a lot of density, not a lot of people out walking and using transit, so using a smaller vehicle that responds to when people need to travel, rather than a large vehicle that's driving up and down that same corridor regardless of whether or how many people are actually using transit at that moment in the day, might be a better solution. We'll actually conduct demonstration projects of different types of community mobility solutions. We're paying close attention to what's happening in other cities across the country. We're monitoring the service. We're having conversations with technology companies and potential vendors that might provide this service, so it might not be a metro bus. It might be a service that we subcontract, and certainly a smaller vehicle. We're also considering changing our metro bus fleet. Today, we have about 400 buses, almost all of them are 40-foot buses. We've got some 60-foot and a few 30-foot buses, but we've got very different levels of demand and passenger volumes on the routes we serve. We make the decision about how big a bus on a given route needs to be based on how many people during the busiest point in that bus's daily duty cycle we're carrying. So we might propose smaller vehicles on some of those supporting local routes. We still need big vehicles on some of our routes. We have a 60-foot bus on the 70 Grand, and we're going to continue to operate those big vehicles on those large urban corridors where we're carrying a lot of people. Using smaller vehicles and some of these community mobility solutions also changes the places we can go. Right now, we can't go into parking lots and shopping centers or employment centers because we've got to keep to a schedule, and our buses are simply too heavy to pull that weight all day, every day. It's a lot of trips, and they're not designed in the same way that our major roads are. So that's an attractive option for us. In addition to changing the network and the routes, we are also proposing some improvements that Metro would make, and some improvements that Metro would work with the communities we serve to make, to create a more complete transportation system that includes pedestrian infrastructure, like sidewalks. We heard from our customers that you want more benches and shelters. We have, we have done some of these improvements in recent years, and we've had the greatest success where we can work with the community, and the community provides the sidewalk or the curb ramps or the concrete pad that we need to have at the bus stop. So this is going to play an important role in our plan. We've proposed targeting some of these improvements at major connection points between routes, and some of these connection points could be mini hubs where we also had bus routes as well as some of those community mobility section, uh, community mobility services intersecting. Some of the vehicles would become branded. We would communicate about the service differently. So an enhanced frequent route that operates every 15 minutes might look different. It would appear different on the map. Right now, if you look at our system app, many of you are probably familiar with that. It appears to be a rainbow of bus routes, but from the map itself, you can't tell anything about that route other than where it goes. You don't know how often it runs or what days of the week it runs, so we would differentiate between these service types with our signage, our customer communication, and even our vehicles. I mentioned that we're going to be changing our fleet. We replace about 16 or 17 buses in our fleet every year at a consistent tempo. In 2019, you're going to begin seeing electric buses on some of our routes. Those 60-foot buses I mentioned on Grand, for example, those are going to retire between 2020 and 2021. We'd like to replace them with electric buses. Metro has three metro bus garages, one in Illinois, one at Delmar and DeBoliver, and one nearby here at Brentwood near Manchester. That would be our first facility to receive electric buses, and we're working on the design of that facility now and beginning the purchasing of those new buses. I mentioned earlier, we're also looking to include smaller buses. I don't know yet whether those would be diesel or electric, but we're looking at all of our different options. We are also deploying, and some of you may already be familiar with some of the tools that we've been making available recently, to improve customers' ability to get information and communicate back with Metro. We have a mobile application called Metro on the Go for trip planning. We're also allowing customers to get real-time bus arrival information via text message, email, or an automated system called interactive voice response. So if you're at a bus stop, you can text us, or you can call a system to say, you know, hey, when is my bus coming? And it'll give you that real-time information based on the bus's location at that moment in time. We're pursuing a messaging platform. This would allow customers to send us a text message and ask a question, or send us a text message and tell them they see some suspicious activity and they're not feeling safe. Earlier this month, we launched an application called Safe Trek. This is a tool, it's an app you can download. You can find out more on our website, metrosstlouis.org/safetrek, and it's a safety tool. You can use it on the metro system, but you can use it anywhere, including in other cities. And if you're feeling unsafe, you open that app, you press your thumb on this, this big blue U on the phone, and if something happens that causes you to feel unsafe, you simply release your phone, your thumb, and the police are summoned unless you cancel that call. So this is just one of a number of tools that we're implementing. We are continuing to roll out Gateway Card. That's our contactless part, uh, I don't have my badge, um, contactless fare payment card. We're doing a soft launch of that. We started last month releasing gateway cards from our MetroRide store at Athem Pine in downtown St. Louis, and you can use Gateway Card to load a pass, like a monthly pass or weekly pass, or to put value on it, $20, $15, your choice, and use that on the bus or the train to pay your fare. We're also pursuing a mobile ticketing option. This would be great for occasional users of our system who might want to purchase a one-day pass, a one-way ticket, or a round-trip ticket, and can just simply purchase that from their mobile phone and use that mobile phone to validate their fare on the bus or the train. So that's a synopsis of the draft plan. So what are the benefits, and why would we propose changing things? Well, in addition to just the fact that people's mobility needs change, where people are coming from and where they're going, and where they're using transit has changed over the last decade, the suite of options we have available for us has changed, and we really want to provide this system of enhanced frequency, so we can get people where they want to go faster and make our system more competitive and compelling to use. So more frequent routes is the key feature of the Metro Reimagined system, and that will allow for better bus-to-bus and bus-to-train connections. We're creating what we're calling purpose-driven service, so with each route, we're asking where are people riding, when are they riding, where are they going to? How can we structure that route to best meet those needs? And finally, we're trying to enhance the customer experience, not just with the network design, but with the branding, with the amenities, and these things that will make using transit more comfortable, easy to understand, and attractive. We think about that enhanced frequent network, that's the suite of 12 routes. That network is within a half a mile of 86% of our current metro bus riders. That's very good coverage. We'd like to retain that. It's also within a half mile of 38% of area residents and 46% of, of area jobs. Now, this is a draft vision of Metro Reimagined, so we took your feedback and a lot of other information, including a very detailed analysis of ridership, market research, and customer comments, to create this vision. It is not a final vision. We want to share it with you, and we want your specific feedback on this draft plan, so we can incorporate that into our next revision. We will share that with our leadership, including our Board of Commissioners and the public this summer, and ask for another round of review before we create a final plan. Most of the changes that I've described here, or the final version of those changes, would not be implemented until 2019, so you'll hear a lot more from us, but before we proceed any further, we want your feedback. And now I'll defer the floor to you and ask Ms. Williams to call our customers who have public comments.
Just a couple of housekeeping things. Your name will be called if you opted to speak. You will have three to five minutes to speak. I have a 30-second remaining sign, should you need to be notified that your time is nearing an end, and we will take you in the order that you signed in. At the end of that time, if someone else wants to speak who thought they did not, feel free to come to the mic. Please state your name. Again, we have a court reporter here today who is taking notes of your comments, your questions, and suggestions. Thank you. Our first speaker is Michael Anthony Abril.
Thank you. Is this on? Yep. So, you know, first off, I want to say I really appreciate a lot of the changes. There's some really great ideas, the Gateway Card, seems like it's something we really need, more amenities and, and more frequent trips. I ride the bus every single day that I go to work. I ride the 58X commuter bus, and that's why I'm also very concerned about the new plan, because my bus is not on the, not on the list. Generally, you know, the last bus of the morning is so jam-packed, you can barely find a seat. We always thought that you would out on an extra bus. Instead, the bus is taken away, along with the 68, and also the 56 in Kirkwood. I live in a predominantly black neighborhood called Meacham Park, and probably 50% or more of the people on my bus are minorities, and I think that this is, this is really a disservice that the county is being neglected so much, and we feel that it's significantly impacting the ability of minorities and low-income families to have access to employment, education, things like that. I know a lot of the young people from my neighborhood will use the bus in order to get employment down in Midtown or Downtown. The 68 can bring them over to, what do you call, Webster University, over to Merrimack College. It brings them to a lot of employment opportunities, and the 58X is fantastic because it brings to the 70, which, you know, is a monster route with so much on it. So I, what I really want, as you revise this plan, is for you to bring back the 58X and the 68. I understand that you need to tailor it to, to use, and it seems that it does need some retailering. You know, many of us think that, for example, the early-morning routes, or early-morning buses are not very populated. It would make more sense to, you know, get rid of one of those and add a later bus for, you know, it's lazy people who don't want to have to get out of bed so early. So, you know, tailoring the routes makes a lot of sense, but getting rid of them, we think, is very premature. So I'd really like you to, to keep at least the 58X and the 68, and to reevaluate the routes that are being removed to make sure that you're serving the needs of minority communities in particular.
Darlene, please restate your name, first and last name for the court reporter.
My name is Darlene Warlick. I, too, ride the 56, and I'm concerned about it stopping at the Rock Hill Loop. I ride way past there. There are other people that ride the bus with me that go to the country clubs up there. There are several young people that catch the bus after the Rock Hill Loop that either go up to work at the, on Kirkwood or go up to the college. There's a young lady, Ms. Grace, if you have not met her, you should. She is a fantastic person. Grace has her own bus stop on Lockwood, and I have addressed this with her, that she needs to get involved with this because she has her own bus stop with her name on it, on both sides of the street. So it would, it's already been a disservice to me because the 56 doesn't run on Sunday, which means I have to get a cab from the Shrewsbury or walk from Manchester and Sappington over to my job, or from Kirkwood Road and Lockwood to my job, which is, I'm not a young person, you know, but, you know, I mean, and I probably use the exercise, but I'm not gonna. And so that, the 56 is definitely a concern for me. I live in North County, so another concern is the 174X. It runs Monday through Friday, which is not bad, but it stops, the last one leaves the North County Transfer Center around 6:40 and goes downtown and does not come back. And I guess that's okay, because they could catch the, a train and whatever connect. But on Saturday, there is no bus on Saturday that would get people from the North County Transfer Center to at least the Riverview Circle. They took the 64 off. It does not make that loop around and come over Lucas and Hunt anymore, so if you needed to get down to the Shop and Save or whatever down the Riverview Circle, you'd have to take something and go all the way around and come all the way back around, and it's just kind of, I know you can't please everybody all the time, but if that 174X could have another name, number one, could at least go to the circle on Saturday until 6 o'clock or something. Some people work Monday through Friday. Saturday is their day that they go shopping and maybe go to the bank. There's a bank there that they may use, so that could probably be kind of reevaluated. Another interest or concern that I have is the 64. Why does it only go one way? That's crazy. There have been people, and I ride the 16 almost every day, there have been people looking for the 64 who maybe don't have a car anymore, so they're thinking that 64 still goes that loop around the other way, and, and they can't get where they're going. They're late where they get there because that bus does not go over Lucas and Hunt anymore. That's insane. There's a lot of apartment buildings over there that people go, live in, that, you know, it's hard for them now to get to work. And in regards to the shelters, I know we're getting ready to get warm eventually, but only having those heating lamps up on the platforms is insane. Over Shrewsbury, that wind whips through there. There are several little places where there could be heat lamps where we could kind of keep warm. It'd be nice if the bus drivers understood that we need to get on those buses when it is raining, when it is cold, and is extremely hot. There's no way that those bus drivers should sit at that circle and keep themselves all nice and comfy while we're out there getting soaking wet. That is crazy. And then they're hateful and ignorant when you get on the bus. That is out of the question. We are paying a fare. We not be pay, may not be paying a lot, but we are paying a fare. We're keeping them with a job, so give us a little consideration. One day we got on the bus, everybody under that, all 20 of us under that shelter were soaking wet because the bus driver sat up there reading the paper while we're standing there getting wet. That is crazy. When it is 90, 100 degrees, we need to be able to get on that bus and cool off. That is not making a lot of sense. So I'm sure that you guys are going to do the right thing for everybody. You can't please all the people all the time, and I understand that, but at least kind of make some considerations and, you know, kind of critique things a little bit to help everybody. And it's a shame that the trains and the buses kind of don't always work, and, but ask the bus drivers at least on Saturdays and Sundays to kind of hold up a few seconds just to see if somebody's getting off the train and running down there to catch a bus, because when you miss that bus and you got to wait 30 to 40 minutes or an hour for the next bus, it jeopardizes your job, you know, and, and, you know, I want everybody to work. I really, really do. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Fran Winter. Oh, thank you. Thank you. Don't often do this. My name is Fran Winter. I live in the city. I live at Jamison and Lindenwood. It's the City Limits Bus. And 18 years, well, I should say first that from 1981 until now, I've chosen not to be driving a car. I've lived in three separate metropolitan areas, and I really felt that this would be a successful thing to do for, for the earth, for whatever, and it has become increasingly I was there at Jamison when the Shrewsbury MetroLink went in, and I thought that it was the most wonderful thing that could happen, and for some time it was. Prior to that, there had been three buses that I could access within a couple of blocks, three separate routes, but there was the one, there was the City Limits. And it has, it has, with the Shrewsbury MetroLink, worked for a while, and then suddenly the Chippewa stopped at, at the MetroLink, and then you would have to take another Chippewa bus. All right? I'm getting older as all of this is happening, but I'm still thinking the buses are improving, the kneeling buses, everything is improving, but I, I can no longer use the system because of the... But I can no longer use the system because of the connections. And it's not really the physical connections. It's the amount of time that I have to stay standing in a lot of places. The MetroLink does not have bathrooms. And I think that that is a sin, a sin. And what bothers me about this presentation is that people are staying away from the MetroLink and the system because of dangers or whatever. And this proposed system is going to be such a jigsaw puzzle. I cannot imagine getting any new customers for yourselves. I can't, you know, even with the handhelds, even with the electronics and whatever, one bus line is going every 15 minutes, one bus line is going 30 minutes, one bus line is going 60 minutes. And of course, the Saturday and Sunday routes. It's just a sin for all the people who are working so hard. And they get a Saturday or a Sunday, and they can't use the bus. So, I don't know how you're going to do this without any more cash. And the cash coming in, I think, is going to diminish when people really understand how many different situations there are. Anyway, I wish you the best of luck. Thank you for listening.
Jim Schultz?
Good afternoon. And my name is Jim Schultz, and I want to first thank you for the opportunity. Want to raise this up? Okay, great. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to learn about what we're thinking about here for MetroLink and the opportunity to speak. My thoughts, I have three things to talk about today. One is fare collection. I think it's very important that we enforce fare collection. One, I don't think it's fair to ask the taxpayers to support the system while we're not collecting fares. If we put in turnstiles or some other mechanism for collecting fares for the people that are riding the system, that will help our revenues. And it also has a byproduct of diminishing crime. I think the folks that are causing the trouble on the system and keeping people from riding the system, they're not paying the fares, I'm pretty sure about that. So, if we were to enforce our fare collection, I think we'd solve two problems. Also, my third point is that I think, first of all, I'm really excited about this new vision of public transit. It tells me that we're trying to think differently about how we go about things. And I think we're all familiar with Uber and how disruptive Uber and that type of technology was to, say, the taxi cab industry. We're now getting rides faster for cheaper than we ever were before because we changed the game. I think we should look at that same sort of a technology with dynamic routing of a fleet of shuttle buses or something like that, that throughout the day, we can cover lots of ground and maybe get closer to or even to people's homes rather than having them go to a machine that is on a rail. I really don't think it makes sense in this day and age to put another billion dollars into a rail line where we know that technology has changed over the last 100 years and we have ways of providing better service to more people more economically. So, those are my three points. Fair collection, reducing crime, and thinking about new technology ways of addressing mass transit here in St. Louis other than another rail. Thank you very much for your time.
This concludes our public comment period unless there is someone else who would like to speak that did not sign up. Sure, would you state your name? Come to the mic in the center and state your name, please.
Talk to the screen. Ah, hi. My name's William Winter. I live on Olive just west of 1, Highway 170, which is the Olive Line, which I love. And it work, while it works beautifully, what doesn't work is that there used to be a north-south route that went from the Clayton MetroLink Station. I don't know how far north it went, but it basically went on Bonham and then changed over to Woodson Road. It's gone. For me to get to a MetroLink Station at the moment, and I was looking at this map with the things, and it hasn't changed. Everything goes east-west, very little north-south. I have to walk about 3/4 of a mile to catch the northern end of the 90 Delmar Route to go down to the Clayton Station. The, even though I have the Olive, the only thing I can do with the Olive is go all the way down to the one in Delmar. And that doesn't take me north-south. I have to go really east-west for quite a while and quite a few stops before that happens. And to me, I don't think you're going to get a whole lot of new ridership as long as there is no north-south corridor from that MetroLink Station in Clayton. It works beautifully, the station. But then the bus routes, as I say, the closest I can get to my house from there is about 3/4 of a mile away on the Delmar Line. And it stops. The Delmar, nothing connects the Delmar, the Page, and the Olive Lines and possibly going farther up to St. Charles Rock Road where there is a desperate need for a line, but it doesn't exist. And most people from the county are not going to go down to that Delmar stop more than the first time they go there. I know you try, or you say you try there, but that's a trouble-making place. And people will do it once until they see trouble there, which happens quite often, and they won't do it again. There really is a need for this north-south corridor, which you had at one time and got rid of. And I hope you look at it again. Thank you.
That concludes our public comment period. Again, we are not leaving. The planners and the staff will be here to answer any questions, entertain any of your concerns on a one-on-one basis. And on behalf of Jessica Medford Miller.
No, Maureen, I, we've got time. I can respond to the questions that I remember. And feel free, throw your hand up, and I'll answer. I want to try and go in order. So, 58X, right? So, feedback like this and feedback that we're getting from the print comment forums and from our customer service call center and online via email, we're using that. We've heard it from a lot of the 58X customers. And you're right, on average, it's a low-productivity route. It's all kind of nested within those later trips. So, we know that we'll come up with an option. I want to wait and see. We're waiting to see like this lady's comments on Adams in the western part of the now 56 Kirkwood-Webster. What exactly comes in and what we're hearing so we can craft a revision? So, there will be revisions. We hear you. And that's why this very specific feedback I'm writing from this point at these times is meaningful to us because we're using that information and we know we'll go back and change. We were in the city of St. Louis, not last night and the night before, and we were getting feedback on some of the needs there. People liked the very frequent service but needed the neighborhood service, particularly to destinations like shopping. And I hear you on the weekends. You'll see in this plan greater parity, greater similarity between the weekend and the weekday than we have now and between the midday and the afternoon and the peak period. Because we're looking at not just where people are riding, but when they're riding. Everyone doesn't work Monday through Friday during the daytime. And so, we're working to accommodate those later shifts. So, our frequent, our biggest frequency service ends at 9:00, not 6:00 o'clock like it does today. We're working to try and increase that Saturday service, including actually on the 174X, because we know we've got a lot of weekend demand. 10 years ago, we had some of the routes that didn't even have weekend service. And as we've added weekend service, the ridership has grown. And the nature of work and where and when people travel has changed as well. People are working first, but second and third shifts as well are working variable times. We're seeing a lot of that, and we're working to respond. In the very lowest-density markets, we think that these on-demand services will help us. We need a big bus on a regular schedule, running consistent tempo in those places where we have relatively consistent demand. But at the times and the places where we don't, that's where we think another mobility solution or community mobility option will help. To your point, ma'am, about the confusion, it does. I can see how it seems a bit confusing stitching together all of these services. But what we're trying to do is take routes, we're straightening them. Over the years, we have created so many deviations in response to land use or where particularly businesses locate or residences, like, think, large apartment developments in our suburban area. So, we're deviating off the main line to serve them. But the result is if we've got a deviation that takes five minutes to get to an employment center, everybody on that bus, regardless if they're going to that location, is taking that deviation. And some of those deviations aren't as productive as it used to be. Out on the Rock Road corridor, like in Boulder Industrial, if anyone rides that, we have deviated so much to hit these destinations, to get people to jobs, so a valid purpose. But it's taken too much time, and a lot of those jobs have moved to other locations. And so, we're repurposing that route. Rock Road is going to be one of those routes that is, it probably looks like the Rock Road of some decades ago where it's just on Rock Road and it's running straight east and west. To the gentleman, the north, the north-south. We don't have a north-south connection proposed from Clayton, excepting on Hanley. And they're kind of oriented, it sounds like, further northeast of where you're wanting to go, which is more straight north or northwest. We'll look at that. And that largely is a function of the demand. In the city of St. Louis, many of the routes are north-south. And we're hearing in the city, we want more east-west. And it seems to be the reverse here in St. Louis County. So, we will look into that. Fare collection, and fare collection, while this particular study is focused on the metro bus network and design, I can tell you about a separate and related effort. Metro's working with the city of St. Louis, St. Louis County, and East West Gateway Council of Governments will soon launch a comprehensive safety and security assessment of the MetroLink system. East West Gateway is actually taking the lead on that. They'll be looking at the operations of our various, and there are four entities responsible for providing some form of public safety and policing on our system. They're led by St. Louis County Police. But they'll be looking at treatments like barriers that would come with a cost, but we are going to explore them. That study will actually kick off later this spring, so stay tuned for that. In addition to thinking about infrastructure and design and safety and security, we're looking at our MetroLink Stations. We will soon redesign four of our original MetroLink Stations in and around downtown St. Louis. They're almost 25 years old now and need a little bit of a facelift. So, we are looking at them specifically through not just a maintenance lens, but also how can we make people feel comfortable and safe? How can we use sightlines and cameras? And how can we create a sense of place to make it more attractable, attractive, comfortable, and well-lit? We have two new facilities that we've added to our system that have become the gold standard. And we'd like to deploy this standard elsewhere. Those are North County Transit Center. I know, ma'am, you mentioned you use that. That opened in spring of 16. And our Civic Center Transit Center that reopened in August of 2017. Both of those facilities are major hubs. One is all bus and color ride, one is bus rail and color ride. They are both glass buildings that are very well-lit, secured 24/7. Tremendous amounts of passenger volume there, but also tremendous amounts of metro personnel. We're working to take our supervisors who manage metro bus service out of the garages, out of places like, excuse me, our Brentwood Garage here at Brentwood in Manchester. Now, they are stationed at those Transit Center hubs. They're interacting with the operators. They're focusing on the behavior, you mentioned, ma'am, operator courtesy. And that is something that we are focused on tremendously right now. And we're in the process, I'm pleased to say, of overhauling our whole metro bus operator training and retraining programs and reinforcing that with those supervisors who are in the fields. Greeting customers when they get off the bus, talking with operators when they get off the bus as well to enforce this improved customer experience. We'll deploy that same model, one at a time at our other locations, varying sizes. They won't all be as huge and busy, of course, as Civic Center. And we're doing that without new personnel, except the personnel involved with actually cleaning and maintaining the facilities themselves. Otherwise, we're taking folks out of the offices and the garages and putting them in direct contact with the customer and with the operators. That's central to that rider-centric revolution I described earlier. Those people are also available to help people with trip planning and information to make navigating the system a little bit easier. Other questions I didn't address? Yes, sir?
Can you speak to the concept of having a Uber-like network or shuttle bus?
Sure.
That could be dynamically scheduled to cover tremendous density of population. That has to make sense in combination with some other solutions that we already have in place and such. Why would you challenge Cortex to open a suite, kind of hack, saying, here's our problem? I don't think so.
Yeah, we're actually working with Cortex, the city of St. Louis and others. So, soon, in the next month or so, this is the kind of behind-the-scenes stuff. One of the things we'll be doing is doing some modeling called microsimulation to look at where all of the people going, not just using transit, but just people in general. Where are the demand points? When are people traveling? And what would it take in terms of vehicles to provide connections between those points? Now, if it takes so many vehicles and so much money that it requires a fixed route service, then we wouldn't be proposing a community mobility solution because then that violates one of those three core principles, cost effectiveness. We're assuming cost effectiveness, ridership, and customer experience. But there are a number of ways mobility on demand can operate. Now, I'll use a couple of our markets here to try and bring it home to the St. Louis area. So, one of the things we talked about was Fenton-Grawway Bluffs or the Western Interstate 64 corridor. So, imagine if we had a smaller fleet of vehicles doing some route deviation. So, they're kind of cruising around on those main routes where we know we're picking up and dropping off customers. But they can also be dynamically dispatched. So, you can call us or you can use a mobile app. It's typically how cities are doing it. And they can deviate to your driveway or to your employment destination and pick you up. And if there are similar trips along the way, they're carrying them too. So, it's not necessarily individual. It won't always be you and the driver like an Uber. And Uber Lipt and Uber Pool has a little bit of pooling. We would be doing pooling, right? Because we still are in the mass transit business. It's not all just individual. You wouldn't be able to hail that service ticket from here tonight to Lambert Airport. If you wanted to do that, you're going to get to the Brentwood Station and use MetroLink there, using our system. But it's an option that uses the resources we have available. It would likely, excuse me, be a service model, thanks, Maureen, that Metro would broker and not operate ourselves. And that gives it scalability. Scalability is not something that our system does well. You know, we do well with Big, carrying a lot of people a similar place. And we've got to kind of peak up and down roughly in eight-hour shifts. But with a different operator, we can be dynamic. And you can use that same fleet and change demand because we know that demand ebbs and flows in different places at different times.
Yeah, Rob, specifically to that, once you get this electronic technology that tells you where every rider was picked up every day and you start using big data analytics to figure that out, you can create an incredibly efficient system.
Yeah.
By doing that.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, and it's different types of service. Some of the markets that we think have common needs that we've proposed mobility on demand for, downtown St. Louis, we have MetroLink and we have local metro bus routes within downtown. There is cross within downtown travel that we serve on the 99 Downtown Trolley. That's a fixed metro bus route. It's not terribly productive. We're not serving a lot of customers. So, we've proposed a mobility on-demand solution for downtown. The Cortex in Central West End environment, lot of density. People need to get from the Central West End Station. The place is very close, but just seems too far to walk. Or maybe in the evening or in bad weather, people don't want to walk. Same was within Forest Park. We operate the seasonal shuttle in Forest Park during the spring, summer, and early fall. Something like that could use a similar pool of vehicles. And those vehicles kind of shift around a little bit according to demand. And that's more flexible and perhaps more appropriate for those markets. So, it's not everywhere, but we think it holds a great promise. And what that also does is it frees up some of those resources to put that frequent service in the places we know we can benefit at most. So, we're going to take those 400 buses and our nearly 1,800 operators. So we're going to take those 400 buses and our nearly 1,800 operators, and we're going to use them, but we're going to use them to their highest and best purpose, other places in the system. Other questions? Yes, sir?
Yes, I would take a taxi from Welston Station.
Oh, oh.
I would take a taxi from, you know.
They're recording you. Relax.
Okay. I will take a taxi from Welston Station to Westport Plaza.
Did you say Welston?
Welston, taxi, from Westport Plaza. But the taxi is a little bit expensive, like $20. So if you network with, let me call it, well, any of the taxi companies to make the little ride cheaper, because between Welston and Westport Plaza, there, on that bus route, there's almost nothing to go to for the most part.
Hmm.
You know, to the Rock Road Station, take the train.
That, yeah, so that's...
Welston, too.
You can get on the train and go to the Rock Road Station, 33 goes to Westport Plaza.
Well, now, well, I don't know. Maybe the buses have changed now. But whatever it is, I remember going from Welston Station, Rock, is that the Rock Road?
The Rock Road Station, that's been there for 30 years, it goes to Westport Plaza.
Well, yeah, that's what I mean. I mean, but that bus, if you're talking about little train on-demand...
Yeah, so we're talking about that, but not everywhere across the system. So our service area in Missouri and Illinois is almost 650 square miles. So we're talking about these...
It's here, and you just have to keep looking.
Oh, okay. So we are talking about these community mobility solutions, but not everywhere. So it's not, it's not, here's a regular route plus community mobility all of the time, because that also doesn't honor our cost-effectiveness principle. That would consume far too many resources. So for the Welston to Westport option, it really is the train to Rock Road Station, 33 out to Westport Plaza. That's the mobility solution for that market. And now, if it's, if it's something else, in one of these other identified markets where bus service doesn't make sense, but the 33 makes sense. That's a productive bus route. And so that stays in a little bit changed form, but that is staying as part of the draft plan. So this idea of matching the, that's matching that mobility solution to the market. So it's not all of these options available to me. Like, if I want to get to the airport right now, and I want to go in a car, and I don't want to transfer at the Forest Park to Bolivar Station, then Metro's not going to be a solution for that. I'm going to plan ahead, and I'm going to take it from Brentwood and take the train, the blue line to the red line to the airport, just like you got to take the red line to Rock Road, the 33 to Westport.
You're looking at, let me see, from, let's see, South Fenton area, you mentioned that one as replacing a...
Yeah, let's talk about that. So Fenton is, it's a challenging market to serve. We have changed that route a lot over the years. It's low-density. There is very little sidewalks. We're dealing with the highway outer roads there, but there's demand. People live in Fenton. People work in Fenton. There are some trade schools in Fenton, so it needs service. So what we're proposing is a community mobility solution. So it would operate within Fenton. So if I live and work in Fenton, then you would probably just stay on that option for that trip. But if I live in the city or somewhere else in the county, and I need to get to my job at Fenton, I'm probably going to catch that service at the Shrewsbury MetroLink Station, the nearest hub. It's going to come get me and then take me out to Fenton. Because that's a route, we carry about 250 people a day on the 210 Fenton-Grawoy Bluffs. That is not very many, and that's a lot of resources and a big bus that's being spent on that service. And we can do better with a community mobility solution for those customers.
Okay.
Other questions?
I do have some questions.
Okay.
Thank you. I do have some questions. Where is the money coming from for all these small solutions?
From with, so from within the existing system. So we, the plan that we've shared today is cost-constrained, but it comes with trade-offs. So in order to provide service on the 58X and in Kirkwood, in the revisions to the plan, we would probably have to take off some frequency somewhere else in the system or adjust. That's the balancing act that we're playing.
I am not eligible for welfare, nor do I want it. I live at a low level, but that's okay. As I become older, I was looking for solutions like your small cars or whatever. Well, you know, I was getting quotes from the governmental entities of $20 or $40 here, you know.
For a trip?
Oh, yes. And that was happening in San Francisco. It was happening in San Luis Obispo, where I lived. It was fine as long as the system looked at the, its service as being for people who didn't necessarily have cars. But once you broke away from that, it was very, very, very pricey. And I don't get where you're going to find the money for the small solutions. And I'll say this, I think, having watched all of these transit systems, that the people in St. Louis, sorry, the people in St. Louis are fed up. You're fed up with the system, and they're frightened now. It's not a matter of, oh, I won't go past Lindbergh. I mean, they are frightened, they didn't like public transportation to begin with, and they're really frightened of it now. And people keep talking about, oh, it'll be safe to go down to the Cardinals game. I think we have to respect the fact that the people who are taking your service are people who do not necessarily have cars. And when we start talking about the cars, I'm telling you, to get from Jameson down to St. Louis University was $20. That was, and I would have to wait. I would have to wait. And there might be other people taking that transportation, and, you know. So I'm sad for you. I really am. I wish you had a doubling of the money. I really do. I wish, I wish all these dreams could come true. But we can't even get a porta potty. And, you know, I mean, when people are waiting for public transportation at Shrewsbury MetroLink, and they watch the drivers go in where I'm sure there is bathroom facilities, you know, I don't know. Good luck.
Yeah, so the restrooms, Shrewsbury, North Hanley Station are priorities for restrooms, particularly at places where we've got a lot of connections. It comes at a cost, and it's been, within our organization and the communities, an uphill battle. We've demonstrated success with those two stations, but that means, that is less service we can put on the street in some places to support. Really, it's the cleaning is the big expense at the restrooms. But they're well-loved, it's going well, and you will see more of them. Now, to the cost, there will be a cost. There would likely be a premium fare structure for mobility on demand. It wouldn't be what it costs for an Uber or for some of these services. So there, in order to make a trip happen on transit today, there's a taxpayer investment that's being used to support that, in addition to the customer fare. So I, as a customer, might be paying a $2 cash fare, but depending on the route and how busy it is, the taxpayers are contributing some for that. On the grand bus line, it might be my $2 fare plus an investment from the community of a little over a dollar. Within Fenton, it might be my fare plus $12 or $13 from the community to make that trip happen. We can take those resources and do better to support this service, and it's also a lower-profile service. So our bus service, you know, you've got a full-time operator with benefits. Most of them are full-time operators. You've got a 40-foot bus. Those are expensive. We get about four miles to the gallon on a good day on a 40-foot bus. So you can create a lower cross-profile service, take your fare, and I concede that for the mobility on-demand solutions, it's probably going to be a higher fare. It's not going to be an Uber, and it's not going to be the fares you're talking about with some of the service providers, ma'am. But we can use those public mobility funds to provide this other service. Now, but it's not going to be everywhere. You mentioned that you lived in Lindenwood, in that neighborhood. So we're not proposing community mobility for that location. We are proposing to operate the 16-city limits every 15 minutes. Depending on your needs 20 years down the road, you might want to consider a color-ride paratransit service, which is a door-to-door kind of service. Now, that...
I'd love to talk to that.
So at that fare, I'm guessing at that point, and we can talk offline. You might not be ADA-eligible, because you're young and you're mobile, but down the road, that might be something that works for you. And that's part of our service tiers. Other questions?
I just wanted to mention that when I took a survey of drivers, and I asked them what will motivate them to take public transportation, the two concerns they brought up was frequency, as you mentioned, and the second one followed by was crime. So if you were to make buses more attractive in the freak, I think you did mention that in, but more...
Yeah, frequency is one of our central features.
Yes, if you address that, that will bring more drivers into the field, and then it's a safety issue you've got to address. So I think this, everything goes well, you will generate more revenue by increasing your customers' base.
Here's hoping. Yeah. So in, with respect to budget, Metro operates with a balanced budget. So the revenues we receive from the communities we serve via sales taxes and the passenger revenues go back into services as well as programs, like some of the amenities we've talked about, providing the bus stops, the benches, and the shelters, and the restrooms, and things like that. So when we go back to revise this plan, and there were many drafts before it, we kind of have to pass it through a cost prism. How many vehicles is it going to take? How much money is it going to cost? And we backed down a couple of times until we delivered this. We're going to do the same thing behind the scenes with all of your feedback. We'll build it up, and then we'll get it into something that we can support. And then we also have to look, to add a layer of complexity, we have to look at the sales tax proceeds and the jurisdictions that appropriate them to us. So sales taxes are collected by the city of St. Louis, and St. Louis County, and St. Clair County in Illinois, and then they are appropriated to Metro. And so what the county spends, the county gets. It's essentially like buying service from Metro. The city spends, the city gets, and so on. So behind all of this, there's a whole network of financial plans, and we're intending to put service in places where it can be sustainable, because we know sustainability and consistency is key. We don't want to do this every couple of years. I'd like to implement this in 2019 and not have to do a comprehensive update until 2030 or so.
Hi, I'm Darlene Warlick. Now, are you connected with the Madison County Transit, or...
Little bit, little bit. I'm actually a Madison County resident and user. So we coordinate with them, we talk with them, so they're well-aware of what we're doing here, for example. And we share bus stops, and we share revenue and passes. So some passes work on our system and their system, because we recognize that people travel between our system and theirs, especially within St. Clair County and Madison County. Southwest Illinois College students, faculty, and staff, for example, have passes that work on the Missouri side or the Illinois side of our system, as well as on Madison County Transit. They're an autonomous system, though. They plan and operate their service, and we plan and operate ours.
My question was because I have several relatives who work over at the Hershey Factory or whatever, and it is so hard for them to get to work...
Yes, ma'am.
...because the way that the bus route goes takes them almost an hour and a half, two hours to get over there, and then coming back, they get off work at 3:00, and the buses don't start till 4:00. And in the wintertime, you know, standing outside for an hour, waiting for that next bus to come, so would that be something Madison County would?
That's Madison County, yeah. You're talking about the Gateway Commerce Center, and we've had conversations about it. And I really think that that's a place that needs its own community mobility solution, like a focused shuttle service that connects residents of the county at some of their hubs. I know they've got a lot of employees coming from the Riverbend area up in Alton. So if it connected it to Madison County Transit, Transit Center in downtown Alton, something that came from our own North County Transit Center, because it's about a 16-minute drive on 270 to the Gateway Commerce Center from North County Transit Center, so a shuttle like that, and then something that connected at Emerson Park. And we've had conversations with them about it and shared planning, but that comes down to funding and will within that county. But it's a need. It's definitely a need.
Because, I mean, I've got probably 10 people that if they could leave the North County Transit Center and get on the express bus over there to work, you know, and...
I agree.
Come back, it would be fantastic.
Yeah, I agree. It's something, it's a conversation, I'll tell you, that's ongoing. Similar conversations are starting to take shape with St. Charles County. There's an Amazon location opening in St. Peters. And so that's another case where it is so close but so far away, because there are little to no mobility options there.
Right, right. St. Charles is definitely, there are people that work out there. They have to take a cab, take a bus to the Hollywood Casino, and then take a cab from there over the bridge, you know.
Right, right. It's close but far. I agree. Yeah. Thank you, ma'am. Other questions or comments? And our planning team is here, and I really encourage you, if you're not familiar with the details of this proposal, to talk with one of the planners so we can get your specific feedback. We are using this as we go through this process. We're taking public comments through the first week of May, and at that point, then we will work together behind the scenes to craft a revision to the plan, which we'll share in summer. Thank you very much. And we're here until 6:00 PM, so please grab one of us if you'd like.